Good evening. We are returning from executive session and reopening the meeting. And before we begin, I would just like to take a moment to send our heartfelt condolences to the family impacted by the North Balmouth incident this afternoon. And also a huge thank you to the staff at North Balmouth Elementary School, the high school, the reunification team, the custodial staff, the bus drivers, everyone for really managing a stressful situation. So just a thank you. And again, my heart goes out, our hearts go out to the family impacted today. So first, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand, either in person or remote. And I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws. Do we have anyone who's making a recording today? And seeing none, we will move on to mission and vision. Bill Ryder.
The Balmouth Public School mission. The Balmouth Public School creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resilience. The Balmouth Public School vision. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Bill. And for the official, Terry.
Okay, I kind of muscle a little bit. Okay, this is from a third grader at Mullen Hall School named Gary, I think. What is going well in your school? Math, recess, snack, and snack time? Okay, this is from Jack, grade 11 at Balmouth High School. What would make your school life better? Not having to wake up at six every morning to school.
I can hear that, Jack. Okay. And also, Terry, your moments.
Okay, I'm here to say for the whole school committee, a farewell to Mr. Ryder, who has been guiding us from his expertise as a teacher, as an administrator. We've gotten his financial expertise and budgets and all that stuff. And the thing I've always remembered on this, he loves the kids. There are so many instances when he just says, "Think of the kids, think of the kids." And it isn't just a false mantra. It's really obvious. So anyway, we know you like your garden, so you'll find something to hear from always to continue your work in your garden.
Yes, and as you frequently say, the plant in the dirt. And you will be missed.
Sure. I will miss this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will miss you. Lisa is busy tonight. She had made a prior commitment to take care of an animal that's having some kind of a medical procedure that they need her expertise daily with. And she couldn't find anybody else to do it or give up. So anyway, that's why she's not here. But Lisa will be missed. She's always so positive about it. I don't think of her as anything negative.
Not in public.
Not in public. Yeah. So we want to thank Lisa Hart for having me. And as we know, she's always very fashionable, so we gave her this certificate to fashion nails.
So thank you both, to both of you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@balmouth.k12 MA.us. Do we have any public comment this evening, either in person or remote? Margaret, please join us at the table. Yep, that came right there. Yes.
Hi, I'm Robert Sousa. I'm so glad to be here in person. I was on Zoom last meeting because I had COVID. And I'm not contagious, so I'm here in person. I'm writing to the school committee, so thank two people who are not going to read some open decisions. I'm here to listen, to learn, to find out sort of a better understanding of school committee. But I'm also going to ask you if you vote. I would like you to consider voting for me. I can check off a lot of boxes right here. I'm a social worker, I'm a anthropologist. You know, I've done parliamentary procedure at our college for six years. I took drug alcohol education at NYU for 20 years. I've always been concerned of education. You know, I started my first job teaching third grade because my college professors said, "If you want to teach in college, go teach third grade. They'll teach you how to teach." And my college students, I think, would agree that they did a fairly good job. And actually, some of them still in touch with me on classroom. So it's just incredible for many years ago. So all of my life, I've done many, many things. But there's nothing more important than education. There's nothing that we can do to help the next generation. Without another generation, we are no longer a society. I'm an anthropologist. And so what we do with our young people is essential. And I want to support the school system. I want to support parents, teachers. And I want to be part of sitting at that part of the table instead of this table in the future. And so I would ask you, please consider voting for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Any other public comment? Can we give any of our remote participants an opportunity? Okay, seeing none. First on our agenda, student advisory report. Lori.
Yes, thank you. So Anna Bennett is going to join us by video in just a second. She plays spring sports, and so it's very difficult for her to get here. But it was, which we know from last meeting, but it was her idea. She wanted to actually create a video to share. So she would at least be able to share her thoughts from afar.
All right. Lingers across the surface. Please. And there's no. All right. Hold on just a second. Sorry. A lot of loud trouble tonight.
If you need a few more minutes, we can go to the next item on our agenda and circle back if that's easier for you. No pressure. Andrea, I see your hands up.
If we have a minute while that's trying to come up, I did want to.
Go ahead.
I wanted to pass along, you may have seen your email from MASC, that there's a conference this Saturday for the student representatives in Massachusetts. I don't know if Anna could attend, but this is something that MASC has been holding. Now it's looking like it might be twice a year. And they're looking at things about how to be an effective student representative, how to pass the torch to the next representative, and other themed discussions, mental health, DEI, and curricular reform. So it's a really good program, and it helps to develop our students in that role. And I would just encourage that for Anna or any other student who's going to be taking that on.
Great. Thank you, Andrea.
All right. One more try.
Okay, we'll do one more try.
Hi, thank you for having me again. I just wanted to give you a few quick updates. First off, over the weekend, there was a very successful junior prom and after-prom celebration. Students had a lot of fun, and it was an overall great experience, especially being the first real normal prom we've been able to have in a couple of years. Coming up this weekend, the FHS Theater Company is going to perform their musical Seussical. And we're very excited to see all their hard work paying off. Their show's on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And tickets are available online. As far as spring sports are well underway, and they're about halfway through their seasons at this point. We're looking forward to seeing how the Clipper seasons end up. If you have any additional questions, feel free to email me at anna.bennett.24@balmouth.k12 MA.us. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Anna. Very creative. Okay, good to know. Next on our agenda is the presentation of Special Education Parent Advisory Council, commonly known as CPAC. Joe.
Hello. Thank you. So Terry Allen Hunter, our CPAC chair, is not, you know, she's planning a meeting. So unfortunately, something came up, she's not able to be with us tonight. So I am going to give a very brief overview of the workshops that the CPAC has held this year. So we kicked off the year with the Basics Rights, the Federation for Children with Special Needs. They do, which is actually a mandatory workshop for every CPAC. And it's a Basic Rights Understanding the IEP. And that was for parents in, being that it was a federation workshop, we had the ability to invite any member, any parents from surrounding communities as well, because it was virtual. So we had a very nice, it was a very nice, well-attended workshop, and that was in October. In December, we hosted How to Access Autism Services and Supports Through the Insurance Providers. So again, that was a well-attended workshop that CPAC hosted in December. In February, we had the opportunity for Senator Julian Seer to join us. And he presented our children's, multiple topics of the children's mental health, which is very timely, very necessary. So we are very fortunate and thankful that Senator Seer was able to join us and present on that. And then in May, we just, I think people are aware with our press release, that we are participating in the tiered-focused monitoring review from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education focusing on special education and civil rights. So we had a parent orientation workshop, and that was on Tuesday, May 3, to answer questions about that process. And then just Thursday night, we had another CPAC workshop. And we did an overview of topics, actually Terry presented, and did an overview of topics of the Special Education New Guidance, Mass Health waivers. We tapped into some evidence-based versus research-based of what that looks like in special education, extended school year requirements, concepts of IEP, some of the SRF funds, racial equity, and diversity, and the district and school and school committee report cards. So that was also another nice session. And then the final meeting will take place, and that will be to review the CPAC bylaws and vote the officers. Happy to answer any questions, everyone.
And when is that?
That'll be in June.
Any questions for the school committee for Joe? Great. Okay, thank you very much. Seeing none. Next, introduction of new Balmouth High School principal, Lori.
Yes, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce Dr. Alan Harris. And I believe he's joining us now. Dr. Harris is joining us from California by Zoom. He will be here in July, for real. But he's been, his experience, he's been a principal both at elementary, middle, and high school. He's been a central office administrator and a superintendent, comes with much experience. He has especially a deeper knowledge of our social-emotional learning. And that is part of his current position. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over and let Alan speak a little bit. And if you have questions, he'll take those.
Great, Alan.
Thank you very much. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Well, it is just such an honor to have the opportunity to join the learning community at Balmouth High School and to join the Balmouth School District. Having had the opportunity to work as a teacher, principal, and administrator in in other districts and other schools, the words "students first" are pretty common. What is uncommon is to see those words acted out in actions and delivered on a regular basis. And I think what was most moving for me when I came out to interview was to walk into the panel full of teachers and students and parents and community members and administrators. And their questions were so thoughtful and intentional and focused on student outcomes and on things like wellness for teachers that is more important than ever as we've been through 27 months of unprecedented times in education. And the teachers are sincerely the heroes in this work, who just continue to show up every single day. That was evident to me. And as I said, I was really humbled to have the opportunity then to interview with the superintendent's panel. And in that panel, have the opportunity to be Paulo, the executive assistant for the principal, which was a delight. And then finally, to have the chance to meet with the assistant principals and talk about it, to hear how deeply committed they are to inclusion, access, equity, and diversity. For me, a great mentor of mine said, "We aren't done with this work in education until student outcomes are predictable, are not predictable by things they cannot control, like their race, or their economic status, or they're qualifying for special education services." And that has been my life's vocation and advocation. I really think that in our work going forward, as we move forward now in education, that there's not, it's not possible to have another thing land on anybody's plate. We have to understand that excellence and equity are interdependent. Excellence without equity is privilege, and equity without excellence is a tokenism. And we have to get to both of those. But we have to do that intentionally, listening and learning with one another. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to join you all in that effort.
And so we're excited to have you join us. Are there any questions for Dr. Harris? Just want to check with our remote attendees. Okay, seeing none. Oh, Terry.
I just wondered, are you ready for the shock from one coast to the other? You know, the Atlantic Ocean is much better than the Pacific.
I appreciate that. My daughter, who lives near, who lives near Balmouth, completely agrees. And really, really looking forward to that as well.
Okay. Now, I just wonder, how long ago were you a principal?
So I was in, in 20, last year, I was superintendent in a school district called Sierra Unified. I was superintendent there for two years, from 2019 and through 2021. Prior to that, I was an elementary principal in that same district from, for three years prior to that. So I was most recently a principal in the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
So Dr. Harris will be joining us, as I said, in July. He will be here in early June, visiting, spending time at the high school. I'm going to hold a community meeting so that our staff, students, and families can meet Dr. Harris. And so that'll happen in early June, and then he'll return to us for his tenure, the beginning of his tenure in July.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, we all look forward to meeting you, and thank you for joining us via Zoom tonight.
Thank you so much. Pleasure to meet you.
Welcome.
Next is presentation of clustered regularly interspaced short palindromic repeats. I just wanted to say that. You know, it's CRISPR. Dr. Moore.
Yeah, thank you. So Chris Brothers is here with two students. If you could come up to the front table here. Three of you joined us. We look forward to this presentation. And it's, everyone could also.
I'm just here to fast-forward on.
So, so we'll start with the directors. I'm Andrew Mark Wolf. I'm a senior at Cal State School.
I'm a librarian, focus on a junior at Cal State School.
And this past March, we went down to the marine biological laboratory in Wisspool to do a four-day course on their CRISPR technology. We're going to talk a little bit about what we learned and what we did there. This is the picture of the twelve of us who went.
And basically, to give a short overview of what exactly CRISPR is, it's utilizing an enzyme, the caspine enzyme, to basically create a double-stranded break in DNA, where after that, you can either send, well, first off, you know exactly where this is in the DNA. You know exactly what genes are we targeting. So after that, you can either delete a segment of that DNA, or you can insert your own. Basically, you can control the type of gene that you want to regulate, the type of gene you want to change.
So we were kind of performing this process on the edge of zebrafish that they had down at the MBL. And we were injecting a whole bunch of these eggs with this caspine protein. The video was not funny. That's okay. So yeah, so here we have a bunch of pictures of us on microscopes injecting the embryos and observing the development as across the three-day period of the development.
And since it was three-day program, and it took, it doesn't take that long for zebrafish to develop, but we had periods of time where we couldn't exactly just observe them for the entire time. So we were also taken on tours of other parts of MBL, such as, in the top left, you can see us visiting cephalopods, which were like cuttlefish, octopus. There were squids, but we didn't see there something. In the picture on the right, that's us visiting the actual zebrafish laboratory where zebrafish we were working with came from. And then the bottom left is the treatment axon model, which MBL also uses to sort of test and experiment with liver generation.
And we also visited the marine resources center down at the MBL, where they keep all their marine organisms they use for research and all that they get from the ocean around there. And so here we have us learning about the horseshoe crab and how it can be useful for us. And also, at the bottom there, Nippon Patel, the director of MBL. It researches the genetics of butterfly wings and how their structure really affects how we perceive the color of the wings. And so that's what we were learning there about butterflies and how the shape of the wings actually determines how it's eaten.
Another part is that we went on a rare book, Matt Person took us on a rare book tour of the MBL library. Including, in the top left, I think this one is probably the coolest, was an original signed copy of On the Origin of Species by Charles Darwin. And also in the top right, you can see a picture of Chris Brothers with the Nobel Prize that we actually got this way.
And the final thing we did there is we were able to use the MBL's confocal microscope to look at images of a somatoplasma embryo and its development to kind of see the different different kinds of cells and see how the structure that was developed in there. And so each color is a different kind of cell, for us, and for the light. And then we were able to generate these 3D images that we could really see. This again is a video that's not playing, unfortunately. But we could see really well the structure, where each kind of cell was, and how the embryo was developing along there.
And then finally, these were results after the three days. In the top left, you can see a picture of a normally developing zebrafish embryo. And then out of the two genetic modifications, one of them is shown in the bottom left. That one is removing all of the pigment from zebrafish. You can see, like, you can compare the, both of the things back to the original picture of a developing zebrafish. And this one is removing all of the pigment. And the top right is causing the zebrafish to develop without eyes. So, I mean, it did, like, our results were successful. You can definitely see the difference between the two of them.
Responding with a big thank you to both the MBL for providing us with this opportunity for education, and also, of course, school committee here for approving this, for education and sports.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments? Let me hold back and see the participants here. Any, Bill Ryder, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, what grade level? I'm just curious.
I'm a senior and a junior, but we were, this was all freshmen through seniors, for there were a couple freshmen.
And what courses are you taking in science at Balmouth at this point in time?
This year, I'm currently in AP Bio. And next year, I'll be taking AP Environmental Science.
Excellent.
If you visit this year, maybe chemistry in the last year. The most biology I've taken was freshman biology, but.
So this experience, which absolutely had to be amazing. Does that, does that lead you then collegiately into a biology or some kind of interest in that area?
I think it definitely can. It's not, you know, it's mostly, yeah, it really is an interest-seeking kind of thing. You know, it's, it's getting to see all these, these processes and really, you know, firsthand, get to do things in the lab to see this CRISPR in action was really kind of inspiring. We did kind of look more into that kind of field to.
Yeah, I think it definitely was incredible in that sense, where in biology this year, I think back in sort of January, February, maybe, kind of when we first started talking about this program, was actually a part of our unit where we were talking about genetics, DNA replication, DNA mutation, all of these sort of things. So I think it was like really just sort of fascinating to have all that knowledge kind of going through. And it's like, you can hear about double-stranded breaks, you can hear about DNA replication, you can hear about RNA synthesis, you can hear about all that stuff. But when you actually kind of see what is happening in front of you, it's really just eye-opening and super interesting to kind of be like, oh, okay, so this is exactly what genetic modification and genetic mutation is going to look like.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you all for joining us. We love hearing about it. We love when the students come back and share their experiences.
Really, it's been truly impressive.
Oh, yes, we are. Yeah. Yeah. So the next item on our agenda, we're early, so right, please, the person isn't here yet. So we're actually going to skip ahead a little bit. The interview of law firms will take some time. So we're going to move to the first three of the policies. And so they're clustered. So I'm going to read the first section. We'll discuss that, and then the second section. So first, the policies, AC non-discrimination, ACR non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation, ACA harassment and discrimination prevention, ACA non-discrimination on the basis of sex, ACAB sexual harassment, and JICFP bullying prevention. So, Dr. Moore.
So the policy subcommittee, Matt again, and I'm going to let Mary Gans go over the changes or the recommendations for the harassment and bullying section.
Do you want me to go through each policy?
Correct. And just briefly explain, this is first, yeah, first, just briefly.
First, policy, AC non-discrimination. We really were just bringing that up into compliance with updated laws. And with, it now is in compliance with the mask wall policy. So one of the major changes was really, we enlarged, there were some additions to the protected classes in that policy. But it is a very standard, a very, very strong non-discrimination policy. ACR is also, this is a non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. And what happened is there are some grievance procedures that relate to this type of policy, as well as when we talk about sexual harassment policy later, too, that we also have to update on an operational level. But we had to get the policy up to par with updated laws. And this also complies with the new mask model policy. It mirrors that. So we brought that up to date.
Natalie, did you want comments at the end, or do you want them as we go?
So what we'll do is Mary will present this bundle, and then we can have comments.
All right.
So then ACA, sorry, Patrick. Dating understands. I have my own road to lead. So policy ACA, I have to be honest, when I met with the policy subcommittee, I said, "Why do we have this policy?" I wasn't really sure. It's duplicative of our other harassment and non-discrimination policies. It also, I understood that there was some intent at one point to possibly make this apply to. make this apply to any kind of like workplace harassment or bullying allegation that might be out there. But under the law in Massachusetts and federal law, harassment involves protected classes. If you are making a claim for harassment, you have to be a member of a protected class, which is race, gender, sexual orientation. Massachusetts, the legislature for several years now has proposed some workplace bullying laws to be adopted by the legislature. They have yet and yet not to pass, which that would cover, you know, my boss is annoying me and there would be certain parameters that you would follow under that policy. But right now, if, if this were to be a policy that we stuck with, it's not consistent with state or federal law. And then even with that, if it were to cover just regular workplace bullying, if you look at some of the examples, they all tend to relate back to protected classes. So I just did not fully understand why we got this policy and had recommended that we eliminate it and with the policy subcommittee and that because there was no need for it. It was repetitive and duplicative. So then the next one that we have ACA, A, this is consistent with the current mask policy, state and federal law, but my recommendation, our recommendation for the policy subcommittee was to not call it ACA, but to call it ACA, because that's what's consistent with the mask model policies and most other school districts. If you eliminate the current ACA, which is the one that I said, doesn't really make sense to me. The sexual harassment policy, this one had to be updated very specifically because the federal government changed, I keep looking at the camera, but I should be looking at people. This particular policy, Title IX was changed in 2020, very specifically. Um, it really, many things were changed in the regulations. And so our policy had to be pretty much revamped and revised. This does comply with the current Title IX regulations and it is consistent with the mask model policy, which they also adopted to comply within regulations. That is the same for the bullying policy that it's now consistent and fully in line with the bullying statute and amendments that have been made to that statute over the years. And that also complies or mirrors the mask model policy on bullying.
Great, thank you. So any questions or comments on the first bundle that we have just reviewed? And Kelly, now that you had a question or comment.
Leah had her hand up if you.
That's okay, Kelly. You were first.
Um, so just working, like flipping through, I had a number of comments and I, and questions. Um, and I think Mary already answered the first one, which was that, you know, we've talked a lot. So I'm on page two. We talked a lot about adding immigration status to our list. And I noticed that it's not in here, but I'm wondering if it's because what Mary said about it being a protected class, because it's definitely not the same as national origin. Um, and I guess I don't really need answers to the questions now. I just want to bring up my, that was my first question.
Kelly, that was my question too. So.
Look at that.
There you go.
Excellent. Um, so that was one question. Um, in some of the other, on that same page, page two, and some of the other policies, we actually give contact information for Dr. Woodward and Dr. Santa. So I would love to add it here as well, even though it does mean we have to revisit it whenever something changes, but I think it's worth.
Oh, it is there. If you look at the in red, do you see that? The names, page two, sort of a third.
In the other, in the other policies, we actually list needs to contact them. Like phone.
You're seeing like an email address.
Phone number or email.
Okay, yes, you are correct.
Um, then on ACR, um, under definitions, we say discrimination harassment are defined as unwelcome conduct, whether verbal or physical. But then later on, we talk about display or circulation of written material. So I think we should say verbal, written or physical, since one of our, our very first example is something written. Am I making you crazy yet? Sorry. Um, and then I'm skipping a whole mess of pages and going all the way back to the sexual harassment policy ACAB. Um, in the very first sentence, there's just a typo. It says all all fours instead of all forms.
Yeah, I thought we, yeah.
Um, and then I had a general question about.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure you've gone through it like, I mean, I know how much the policy committee puts into this. I always feel bad when I catch stuff, but after working so hard on it, I know you wanted to. So, um, and this is just a general question about the sexual harassment policy and then the bullying policy that the sexual harassment policy seems to only include staff. And I don't know if there should be something about sexual harassment that would involve students. And then similarly, the bullying policy only applies to students, but have bullying among the staff. And that's really just a question. I don't know what the solution to that is or whether or not you've talked about that.
The sexual harassment actually does include students?
Okay.
The bullying statute, um, under, I mean, the bullying policy under the Massachusetts law, which is Massachusetts general law, chapter 71, section 37, zero. Uh, that, that defines victims or targets as students only. And the reason, the reason for that is, and actually I should have said this earlier, bullying does not apply to protected classes. Bullying apply anybody who's, if any student who feels they are bullied, you don't have to apply, you don't have to belong to a protected class. So that's why the state legislature has tried to propose their own workplace bullying, which would also expand beyond protected classes. So the statute though currently only applies to students.
Okay, which is important because you could certainly have an adult bullying another adult.
And that's why I said under state and federal law right now, that you have to be a member of a protected class to move forward with that type of claim.
Okay.
It's only, bully harassment is only unlawful currently under state and federal law if you are a member of a protected class, unless it's criminal harassment and you're moving in that direction.
Um, on the next, the second page of the sexual harassment, on the one, two, third paragraph down, there's just another typo. Um, workplace and school environment. I think that was my last one. Hold on, I'm getting to the end. Sorry. Um. Oh, okay. This, um, I don't know what the title was. Hold on, I gotta flip all the way back. Oh, I think it's in, it's in the bullying prevention and this might not be something we can tinker too much with because you said it's referenced or it's, you know, based on another model policy. Um, but on the, I don't even know what page it is. If you just skip ahead to the section on bullying is prohibited and it lists the locations where bullying is prohibited on school grounds, on property immediately adjacent to schools, et cetera. The bottom bullet says through the use of technology or an electronic device owned, leased or used by the school district. And what I'm wondering is whether or not that includes or should include things like using school wifi, using school email addresses. Um, because that's technically not the device, but they could be bullying through their school email and on the school wifi on their own device. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if, if it happens at school through the school wifi, then we would be covered because it would be happening, happening at school. The reason for this is if they're taking a school device home and they're using it for bullying after hours, then that's covered. And then if you look at the next page, because we often think, oh, the bullying, anything that happens outside of school isn't our, under our jurisdiction to discipline for school. But under the law, if bullying happens outside of school, and there was even just a recent Supreme Court case, uh, or Massachusetts case, excuse me. If it infringes on the rights of the target at school or if it materially and substantially disrupts the education process or the orderly operation of a school, we have jurisdiction. So, um, even if they're not using the school device, but we wanted to make sure if they're using the school device, we also then, we have limits, we can place limits and restrictions on their use of a school device if they're using it after hours or during school, but especially after hours and properly.
Okay, all right. Um, and then my only last comment was near the end of that about reporting. It does say that each school has a means for anonymous reporting of incidents of bullying. And I'm just wondering what that is. How do the kids know how to do that? And that's a procedure question. It's not a policy.
Good question, yeah.
But I'm just curious.
Well, I, I know that at some of the schools, if the student comes to us and says, we don't want our name used, we will say, we will do our best to protect your confidentiality and we will, we will investigate that way. Oftentimes it's hard because we may need more information or just by then asking another student a question, maybe they may be able to put two and two together and know who came and reported it to us.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Leah. Leah, you're muted.
Sorry, I have double screens here. So, um, so Kelly had the first question that was my question too around immigration, immigration status and I'm wondering if we could add that. I've been asking that quite a few times this year around our policies. I also have a question. So I think it's on page four of the bullying. Um, it's the list of what appear to be school grounds and school sponsored things. So I was just thinking that on the fourth bullet here, it says at function, functions or programs, whether on or off school grounds. I think that should be at school functions, right? Or programs, because later down, it says that even if it's not on a school function or a school function or program. It was just, just adding that it's a school function or program, if that's what we're saying there. Is that right? Fourth page?
Yes, I see it.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I agree.
Okay. So, um, I just want to thank you guys so much for all of this work too. And that actually was my, my only comment on it besides the immigration status. So thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Any other questions or comments on Terry?
Yeah, I just, it's a comment that, thank heavens for Mary Gans. We would have been there forever with this. She made the, she made the process really, um, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. You never know, I might have misled you.
What Terry said is absolutely true. And just as you can see on all of the letter codes for these and the, how they can be similar and how things have been divided over time, just having a way to be very systematic and understand what we're really dealing with here is, is huge. So thank you very much for that, Mary. And then I will say the thing that I know that the people on the committee are probably sick of saying, because I've been bringing this up pretty regularly. But in the sexual harassment policy, there is a new definition and it is in here because it is the, the federal regulation and it needs to be in here. But it is a change that was made a couple of years back. And that is the, the second sentence when it is defining sexual harassment. And it says unwelcome conduct on the basis of sex that is so severe pervasive and objectionally offensive, that used to be an or um, which was more open to, to victims. And the change has been placed where it's and, so it has to be severe pervasive and objectionally offensive. Um, I don't agree with that. Um, we need to have that in here as the federal regulations require. Um, I'm hoping that those will be changed. And I know there's many groups working on changing that. But I, I don't approve of it, how it is in its current configuration. Although I understand the necessity of writing it this way.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Melissa, um, I want to just sort of highlight what Terry had mentioned, that it's really been a pleasure of working with Mary our first meeting. I feel like we were on a great track. I've been on policy since I joined school committee and I feel like we've been, you know, we were on track when we redid the whole policy manual. We had some great experiences there. And then it got a little hairy for a bit, but I really, it's been a pleasure having you there and really having somebody that we're not having to say to Sonia, well, can you go back to our attorneys or can you go speak with legal counsel? Like we have the answer immediately. It's really helped progress things moving forward. And as far as the sexual harassment, once again, Andrea, I'm going to always agree with you on this, that I definitely do not approve of the language either. I respect that it's coming from a federal level, but um, I, I, I don't approve of it. I think it it just, you have to, the, um, I think the new language is perpetrator and it's not victim anymore. We're not using that. Andrea, can you? Target. Target, thank you. So it, it really, it almost, it like the perpetrator has to have greater bad behavior to, towards the target of which I, um, I, I just, I don't like that behavior at all. And I just, I think that it's just poor wording and I'm hopeful that it will go back and you re-write that at that federal level. So.
Great, thank you. Terry?
One other little quick statement in the last, this year so far, we've eliminated two policies. And if you vote to rescind the ACA, we also got rid of the COVID one. So that's nice.
Great. Um, any other questions or comments related to the first reading of policies? Okay, so next will be the first read on policies, BBVA slash BBVB, school committee members qualification slash oath of office, GVA school committee member qualification, GBAA equal employment opportunity, GCF professional staff hiring, IJ instructional materials, JV, equal educational opportunities, JFBV school choice and JIC student discipline.
And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Tellier to talk about the one change.
So the policy subcommittee, when we went through this process of updating, as Mary outlined, the harassment discrimination policies pulled out the protected class language. And you're also guided by the initial feedback from the tiered focus monitoring process that Dr. Woodward spoke about at our last meeting. Um, so we included English language proficiency into the, the statement. And we also reordered the statement a little bit to better match on the mask model policy. And I've already put a note in the margin because the first question from the, the first bundle applies here as well. The, the question about including immigration status. Um, so on the, the cover sheet, the text is in red with the yellow highlight is the phrase that had been worked on and revised through the harassment discrimination conversation. And it repeats in all of the policies that were just read to you from the agenda. And so we also provided in the packet, the visual of what it would be to revise that. There are no other substantive changes to any of these policies at this time. Doesn't mean we won't revisit them in the future. But for this case, it was a matter of keeping the language consistent across these additional policies beyond just those in section.
Great, thank you. Um, any questions or Kelly?
I know, sorry. Um, not related to the question that you guys proposed, I, I think it's awesome that it's all going to be uniform. But when I read the school committee member qualifications one, I noticed that it doesn't have a query requirement on here. And I'm pretty sure that we require of ourselves that we all pass the query. So since we're revising, maybe if that's going to continue to be a practice, we should just put it in.
Yes, thank you. I noticed that as well. So, yeah, I think it was just an oversight. Yep. Wonderful. Um, any other questions or comments about this bundle? Okay, seeing none again, this is the first read and we will revisit these policies our next meeting to act on them. So now we will start that. Um, next on our agenda is the presentation of world stories. Doctor.
So the world stories, um, was, they were presented a few weeks ago in, in April before, and they were absolutely amazing. I think we shared a little bit. And they were absolutely amazing. I think we shared a little bit at the last school committee with you. It was a suggestion from Terry that she would love to hear a story in person. And so we're very honored to have, we have two stories tonight. And I just want to point out that Christine Nicholson is here with us as well, our department head for our ELD program. And Christine, since you're here, would you like to do a little introduction of the stellar stories and introduce her guests?
Sure.
You can join us at the table.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is a FBF directed program that was started back in 2019, 2020. And it's a collaboration between the family community and our school community. And it's a platform for our multilingual school members, staff and students to share personal experiences, to promote cultural proficiency. Storytelling is very powerful because you hear their personal story and you make a connection with them. So it's a way to gain insight and understanding into their experiences. We have, our assistant principal at the high school is Xinyu Li, who is a freshman at our high school, who is acting chief.
And so today I'll be telling a story about me in fourth grade pretty much. So I came from a city that lives in the north of China. And before we officially came here, we came here twice to visit this place, you know. And the first time I was here, I was fascinated because the sky was so blue. I wondered if someone painted it blue. And you know, the trees and it looked like an oil painting and everything. And it was very surprising to a nine-year-old girl who really never been to other places. And as someone who's a little weird for this, I actually enjoyed going to school when I was a kid. And I was like excited about going to school. So I was curious about the difference between American school system and Chinese school system. So thanks to Google Maps, I went to the school, which I later learned was small and home. And the first time I went there, I was very excited about it, right? And the school seemed very big and fancy in my memory. And it looked like a museum, a little school, if to be honest, and a little playground. I saw kids playing at the playground and I wanted to join them, right? But I didn't know how should I do it? Because I was just this Asian looking girl and I didn't know if I was supposed to just walk straight in or if I had to talk to anyone about it. Until a teacher walked over to me and asked me like, hey, do you want to join the kids and play with them? And I was shocked. So like you're telling me, me, a random person you've probably never seen could just go into the playground and like join the other kids? And of course, I said yes. I was nine. And so I went to the playground. I had a great time with the kids. To the end that my mom had to physically like pick me up back into the car because I didn't want to leave the place. And what I remember even till this day was that the teacher, she like squatted down and came to my level and asked me like, hey, are you enjoying this? Like, are you having fun? You know, I can always come back to this playground later. And that's when I like really felt like the American system, like school systems like care. And like, don't get me wrong, the Chinese school systems are not anywhere for that. It's just that there's like 60 kids in one classroom. So the teachers have to be more serious, otherwise there won't be any work done, right? And so afterwards, I went home and I told my mom about what the teacher said and what happened. So after two years of hard work in the lawyer's shop, we're here. We came to America. And time skipped to my first day of fourth grade, right? I was very excited, very hyper and super excited for it that morning. I could still remember my mom taking photos for me and you know, supporting me in front of the school building until I walked in with the teacher. My first thought about the school, like when I first walked in, I was like, wow, that is a long hallway. It probably was the longest hallway I've seen in my life. And there were like a lot of colorful paintings like on the side of the walls. That seemed pretty expensive if you saw it in a museum, right? Didn't like get it, but it looked good. And then my teacher led me to my classroom. And she introduced me to my class, which had like only 10 people. So that was kind of surprising to me how we went from 60 kids in a classroom to 10 people in a classroom, including you. And not to mention, for the first week I think, they all looked the same, right? Blonde hair, blue eyes, and you know, stuff like that. When I got to my seat, my teacher told me something, but sadly I didn't hear it and I didn't understand it very well. But I guess it was the type of sentence that, you know, if you asked it, the meaning would like change. So I just didn't ask. And then my teacher handed me a math worksheet and I just did the worksheet, right? Just started doing it. And then that's when I realized a girl from like the corner of the table started walking towards my direction, right? I still remember how she looked back at her friend like one more time before she came up and talked to me, right? So she came up and she said something and I didn't really understand it. And I was like, oh, I'm sorry. What did you say? And then she started laughing. And then her friend group started laughing. And then the rest of the classroom started laughing. And I didn't quite get it. I didn't know if that was something that, you know, everyone knows new experience or was it just a new experience or anything? And the teacher just pulled the class to quiet down and the teacher didn't do much about it. So that got me kind of confused and a bit lost. But it was way too much to think about as a nine-year-old girl on their first day in fourth grade. So I just went back to do the math worksheet. And after that, like soon after that, the bell, which was kind of a weird noise for the bell, but I adjusted to it a week later, everyone started walking out, including the teacher. And so I just followed them. It turns out we walked out and it was recess that we would have been learned later on. And I stood there because everyone was either in groups or partners, either at the table or like at the slide or at the swings. So I didn't know how was I supposed to just go off to them or like try to blend in because of what just happened? Until this little girl, she ran up to me and her smile was so bright and it matched up to the sun and beautiful weather back then. She asked me about my name and she asked where I came from and we had a lot of fun during recess. So I was quite successful in making my first friend. And after that, we went back to the classroom, did some other work. And I figured out which bus I took to go home. So that's good, didn't get lost. And then after that, I got home, I told my parents about how I made my first friend and you know, the teachers and the worksheets and stuff. And I just cut out the bullying part because I didn't want my teacher to, I'm sorry. I didn't want my parents to know that, like it was my first day of fourth grade and I already got bullied. Because that would leave them like frustrated and you know, upset to hear about it, definitely. And so soon the second day arrived, I was still pretty excited for school because you know, recess, the new lifestyle sort of slow compared to when I came from my city, which was huge, alright? It's about the size of six Tokyo, eight London, 123 Paris or 10 New Yorks. Yes, pretty big. So I really enjoyed the like sort of slow lifestyle, like you know, the simple works I had. And I was curious if the girl was going to come and talk to me again or what was she going to do? And yeah, she did. For that day and another week after that, she would tell me to get her pencils, get her notebooks, carry her backpack or like bring her jacket or fill up her water bottle, right? And she would be so nice that she would point at me and then point at my destination, like the water fountain or her bag or supplies, so I could carry it or do something. And at first, I didn't know how to handle it. So I just did whatever she told me. I thought maybe this represented a friendship, you know? Or maybe it would like slowly get better because she realized what she was doing was wrong. No, it didn't happen. She continuously did whatever that she wished to do. And the teacher didn't seem to know about this and the teacher just didn't do much about it. Until I decided to just start ignoring her. I decided I wasn't going to just do anything that she's saying and I just ignore her. And then she started following me and tapping on my shoulder and I was like, hey, hey, hey. Trying to, you know, grab my attention. And then that's when like I broke out, right? I yelled at her and I was like, this is the school. You're not my parents. You're not the teacher. Why do I have to listen to you? Right? And she was shocked. Like she was in disbelief, like as an April trigger and a $10 million deal or something, right? But after that, my school like went back to normal, you know? Dropping off by the bus in the morning, going into the building, getting to my classrooms, doing worksheets, you know, simple stuff like that. And of course, going to recess and hanging out friends sounds great. But later on, eventually I had to tell my parents about me doing bullying, of course. Because yelling at someone was not a good option to do. And so that, my mom reacted kind of sad. She felt bad for me and she kind of hoped I told her earlier. But she taught me a very important lesson that still hangs off to me by this day. She said to me that what is important is not the beginning or the middle of the story, it's the ending of the story. And that if you wanted to give respect from others, you have to learn to respect others. And that statement, to this day, still lives with me. That's my story.
More worksheets. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I was very disappointed with Ryan to sit down and do this story. Standing is some of my expressions. So my story was, please don't do, don't figure my age, but I'm going to say dates. On 1973, I am at a bus. I am the only person of color. I'm small. I'm tiny. I'm a small first grader among huge sixth graders. And we're all waiting for the bus and we enter for the first time. So this is day one. Going to the bus seats are huge. I can't see the other side. I just see this green, stuff like that. So I'm sitting down here and there's a kid next to me where we're going off to school. The school bus stops at a school. Half the kids go out. I look around. My kid next to me is not going out, so I stay in the bus. The bus goes to a second school. Everyone goes out. I'm walking out. I am following wherever the kid's doing, I'm doing the same thing, following along. And I'm now circling the school, going to halls. I just remember huge hallways. And just going, oh, this is nice. And then after I'm lapping it around, I'm like, there must be something wrong. And then the teacher stops, says, who are you? Thing about it is I don't have to speak the language. I have an index card that says, I'm Yobel Sanjigian. A phone number and my mom's, my mom's name and everything. They grab, put me in the principal's office. They call my mom. My mom doesn't have a car license. She has to take a taxi, come all the way from her job, pick me up and bring me to the correct school. I, I'm in Framingham and this is a school that's no longer there. But I go in there and they take me to the correct school. And what I, we go to the principal's office and what I notice, this is my memory, first grade, is this tall Italian man named Dr. Tomi smiles, welcome. That smile that says, this is your school. You belong here. We go down, it's middle of day, so I've missed the half of school, but we go down downstairs and down is the gymnasium and there's a huge PE class and the kids are running around. Now, maybe small, but I'm fast. So I was like, this is my school now and I dominated it. So the last stage, I'll take the last day of school. My mom, she comes from a country called Haiti. And it's really, the school situation is exclusive. You have to pass a certain standard to move on. And you'll have kids that look like they're high school, but they're still in primary school. So my mom is making a judgment of my first grade talent. And she's like, I'm going to your school and we're going to talk to the principal and saying, you're going to stay back one year. I, for some reason, this stays in my head. I'm arguing my mom. No, I'm not going staying back. I'm going to go to second grade. I just remember, I was this little small kid going to say that to mom, which was scary right now, just thinking about it. But she goes to the school and she says, she goes, Dr. Tomi, I want to talk to you. And I sit outside and I remember the concept, like why does she want me to stay? I remember going, arguing, one minus one has to be one. That was the concept. That's, that's clear to everyone. One minus one is equal to one. But she's like, alright, you're staying back. So. So they go and they talk. And when I come, when she finishes, she goes, yeah, you go to second grade. And it's because, I talked to my mom later on, she goes, I have such great appreciation and respect for your principal, Dr. Tomi. He's worked with you so hard. And he said, you work so hard to learn the language, to learn the culture, to work on these concepts. And he did not want to like bring you back. He said, you, you've done more than most and we're going to continue working with you. So I said, I go, I, well, at that point I didn't know, but at, right now, remembering it back is like, oh, fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Tomi. So now, high point, second grade. I'm in second grade. So the smallest still, the only, it's predominantly Framingham, it's a predominantly white school, so very, very, you know, not like everyone else. But what's really good, high point in second grade is, you're in class and every now and then a principal will come in the classroom, Dr. Tomi will come in classroom and he'll say hi. And you know what? He'll say hi to me. Hi, Ali. How are you doing? And I'm just amazed that he remembered my name and he's working with me. And when I come home, I say, Mom, Dr. Tomi remembered me. And then she says, you know what? He, he also gives you work. He's given me stuff to help me through this culture. He talked to my mom about proper recess attire. You're going to go outside. You gotta have gloves and hat. You know, we're tropical, you know, island nation. You gotta, you gotta know how to, you know, you're going to sled, you're going to have to have the right suits and all that kind of stuff. So that was good. It was good to understand from the teachers bringing additional work for me to help me through this time period. So that was high, just being feeling welcomed by not only teachers, but the administration coming up and saying, you belong here. Low point, second grade, back in the bus. Thumb flies, hits me. Starting, starting getting loud, getting something else flying. And a first grader is starting to be a first grader, I'm a second grader. I might be small, but I'm a second grader. So we get at it. And, and it pushing, pushing starts to punching and it's a fight. And you know, I get blows here and there, but I'll tell you, the hardest thing was not so much the blows, but the crowd, because the crowd started to chant. And the N word was used multiple times in the chant. And so tears in my eyes. Am I really, is this really the place for me? So I just remember the next day, I have Dr. Tomi waiting here. He's a big fellow, but my father is the biggest. He's the biggest guy. And I had to sit down and cheer next to my father, which I felt like totally disappointing. Which, you know, was disappointing that I fought. And he sat down with me and we had to go into the office. I just remember going, oh my goodness, what's happening? What's happening? I don't know what the punishment was. I know I got punished. I'm not sure what the punishment was, but what the message I got was, you made a mistake. We have high expectations for you. We have, we don't expect this to happen again. You're going to move forward. And that was perfect. That's why I needed to hear. I got punished. I know what it was, but it was a bump. These two men supported me. We're moving forward. And that was huge. So there was, I think that's the, that was definitely the lowest point. In 1977, my parents moved, found a new house. And now we were in a small apartment. I had to share with my sister, you know, that my bedroom's with my sister. Oh my goodness. And now I'm in a new house in Marlboro, next town over, Marlboro, I have my own bedroom, site going, all this stuff. And so we lose, I lose this connection with Dr. Tomi. But I go to this new school system and you know, there's good teachers, high expectations. There's some not so good teachers, low expectations. Is this kid going to finish high school? Is he going to go to college? Is he going to finish college? And that's kind of sad when you have that, you have that feeling that, that that was going to be impossible, that someone portraying that you don't, you're not going to finish and stuff like that. So I did finish. I got my BA. I got economics, a small liberal arts school at North Shore. But at that time, I was not, not feeling the business vibe. I'm not feeling the administrative vibe kind of stuff. I want to do something different. 1992, please don't do that. 1992, I, I, my, years ago, my mom said, you'll be the, I think you'll be the teacher. And I said, no, we're not going to teach you. You're in your mind. But I left it at that. But years later, that, that little thing came in my head. And I said, let's take a class. Let's take a master's level class at Framingham State University. So next, I'm going back to Framingham. And, um, I said, let's take a class. Let's take a master's level class at Framingham State University. So next, I'm going back to Framingham. Let's take that class. And so I go into the classroom, first day. Look around, what, uh, twenty, thirty kids predominantly white. And I'm going, should I, should I be a teacher? You know, I still, I'm taking a class. Should I be a teacher? And, um, the teacher comes in, professor comes in and smiles. That smile, I recognize that smile. His voice, I'm recognizing that voice. Uh, and he goes, hi, um, I'm so glad to welcome everyone here. Uh, I'm so glad to see two of my former students. I'm like, what's going on? Two former students. And he says, my name, Ali Obel Sania is here. I had him as a first grader. I'm like, that's my principal, Dr. Tommy.
Yeah.
And I am shocked. I am, I can't wait to go home and tell, no, I'm playing with him. This, you know, the, the name of Dr. Tommy in my house is legendary. So it's like, oh my goodness. But what was really cool about this administrator is that he wasn't shocked. He was proud. He was, he had high expectation. He said, I know you're here. I'm psyched you're here. You belong in this classroom. Thank you for being here. And I, I, I tell you that, that really charged me to go into education full force. And, um, I hope I'm a product of Dr. Tommy. Not only having high expectations, but, um, leaning into, leaning into families and students and saying, you belong here. Let's make sure you're gonna do what is needed. And, um, and I hope I still do that. Today, I'm with, uh, immigrant parents from Brazil and he was amazed that we were not only teaching the subject, but we're leaning in with the students. And we're like, we have this expectation, but we're leaning in on you. So I hope that that's why I'm still here and I hope I continue doing this, um, because I wanna make sure that all students belong here. And we have high expectations. That's my story.
And that experience definitely makes you an amazing administrator.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was great. I love stories. Thank you both sharing. It's like I said, we should end the meeting right there. Um, next on our agenda, and we are back on time. Um, we are interviewing, um, four law firms, um, this evening to speak over these representation for the district. Um, we chose these four, um, because we are deciding whether to stay with the model of single firm representing both general education and special education. Matters or to have two different firms going forward. Um, and we are joined, we've already heard wonderful things about Mary Gans, but she's here again. In addition to being a principal, she is also an attorney. So she's gonna guide this process. Um, each firm is going to have fifteen minutes, um, as an interview. They're going to have the same questions and it's more for the school to listen. Um, and then we will have a brief deliberation after the firms, um, have presented. And then again, we'll deliberate, um, at our next meeting. So we are joined this evening, let me make sure it's here. Yes, I see people. Uh, we are joined by attorney Mark Terry from Merrick O'Connell. We are joined by, um, Alicia St. Florin. I hope I got your last name correct. Um, from Murphy Hess, Tumi and Lehane, attorney Michael Joyce from Metall, Matthew Boy and Joyce. And attorney Paige Tobin from Murphy, from here and Murphy. So Mary, I'd like to turn this over to you to begin with, um, Mark Terry.
Absolutely.
Yes, he's there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Attorney Terry. My name is Mary Gans. I've emailed with you. Um, I'm a district administrator here and I'm going to be running through, uh, some questions for you. We have fifteen minutes, so I am going to set a timer. Um, so I'll let you know if we're getting close to the end of the fifteen minutes. And my first question is, welcome. And can you please introduce yourself and provide us with a brief summary regarding your experience in the field of education law?
Sure. Good evening. My name's Mark Terry. I'm a partner at, uh, here in, be you hear me? Okay, I'm getting a little feedback.
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, right. Um, so again, my name's Mark Terry. I'm a partner at Merrick O'Connell, where I've been for twenty-two and a half years. And I lead the school law practice group. Um, and, um, I would say that, you know, the last twenty years, my practice started sort of a little bit more on the municipal labor law side. And about fifteen years ago, I really made the decision that I wanted to focus on school law in particular. Um, found that it really touched more of my passion, of what I was interested in doing. Um, and really come to enjoy it, made that the focal point of my practice. Um, and it really is what I spend probably about eighty, ninety percent of my time doing. Um, and I'm happy to, to answer more specific questions about, um, background is, is, uh, relates to found the schools.
Just elaborate on what areas of, uh, educational law you focus on?
Sure. So I, I really do everything with the exception of special education law. Um, and I really personally don't focus on the procurement side. Um, my firm, just for context, is a fairly large firm. We have about sixty-five attorneys in the firm. And so that really allows us to specialize a bit more. And so I have a couple of colleagues that really do, um, some of the stuff that, quite frankly, isn't my strength. So they do the procurement law, um, help with bus contracts, school building projects, those kind of things. And I'll rely upon them for some, some conflict of interest stuff, um, that'll come up. They'll bring, bring one of my colleagues, Brian or Steve into that. Um, so my focal point really is, um, what I call it, sort of the screwy school law stuff, you know, kind of all the oddball questions about, um, enrollment. Um, and then it ranges from, from that kind of thing and that sort of education questions to labor relations, employee relations. Um, and, and other government function, open media law compliance, public records compliance. It really is almost everything with the exception of special education work and some of those procurement issues.
Thank you. In terms of, um, how accessible, available and responsive your firm is to school district needs, phone calls and emails. Can you please describe your firm's workflow process? That is, who would be our primary contact? And for what types of matters and what situations might the school district be working with other attorneys or associates in the firm? And what is your firm's availability for handling calls and emails on evenings and or weekends?
Yeah. So I would be your primary contact person. Um, I, it's hard to say this and feel like I'm bragging a little bit, but I would say that, um, a responsiveness is something that, um, I take great pride in. Um, if I can respond to your email immediately, I will. Um, I certainly return phone calls in a minute if I can answer them right away. Um, certainly with, I think COVID, I found a lot more people are scheduling calls, which makes things a little bit easier for everybody. Um, and then to the extent that I, it's something is outside my scope, for example, you know, like the, um, procurement type of issue that I talked about before. I would connect you with one of my colleagues, again, Brian or Steve, are the two that I usually go to for that. And make sure that they're on hand and their responsiveness is the same. Um, we have a firm policy that's around twenty-four hours or less, really the same day. Um, and my, you'll have my cell phone. So, you know, whatever, whatever you need. I had two people call me on Saturday night, you know, when I talked to, um, two folks then. Because they had things that they wanted to chat with, chat with me about for, you know, it was only five or ten minutes. But if they were calling me at that time, I knew it was important.
Thank you. And you mentioned that you don't do special education law, so please feel free to pass on this. But the question is, please describe a difficult and complex special education due process hearing that you were involved in, including what made it so difficult and complex, complex and its outcome?
Yeah, I'll have to pass on that one.
Thank you. Can you please describe your experience with collective bargaining and what you do to prepare for collective bargaining negotiations?
Sure. So the collective bargaining really is where I started my practice. I'm actually on the union side. When I first came out of law school for about two years. Um, so this is what I've been doing now for twenty-five years. Um, I am at the bargaining table with clients all the time. Um, whether, you know, they want me at the table, I'll be there. If they want to be supporting them from the background, I'll be there for that. Um, it really is up to each client to decide, you know, what level of support they want. Sometimes people want me there. For teacher negotiations, but just in the background for paraprofessional negotiations, an example. In terms of preparations, um, it does vary district to district. Um, it varies a little bit based on, um, what this client wants to achieve in negotiations. So if we really think we've got a particular issue that we're concerned about, um, I may do some research, find out through how your, um, neighborhood districts are doing. And what are the districts that they keep doing and gather some data on that? Um, usually, once I've worked with the district for one set of negotiations that we've done, background gathering in terms of, um, how are you? Are you competitive on compensation? Are you competitive on, um, you know, other pieces of your contract? And I'll know that, you know, I'll keep that on file. I don't need to go back to the well and do that every single time unless something is cheap. Um, for example, I know on the keep, most districts, I don't know if you're a part of this, I'll get your health insurance from the same place, right? So if you're a part of that trust group, then, you know, I know what you're offering is gonna be apples to apples, most likely with what other districts in the area are doing as well. You don't need to recreate the wheel. What I like to do when I start working with the district is, the first time we go into negotiations, really make an overall evaluation of the contract. And kind of look at ideally, like a ten-year plan, what do we need to do to get from where we are? You might have a contract that's in great shape right now and it turns out, you know what? You're already there. Um, but more often than not, I find that there are a series of issues in contracts that can be improved upon. But it's not realistic to try to achieve that all at once. So all goes through the exercise of identifying what those issues are and then sit with the client saying, here are the issues. Here are the most important ones. Here are the ones I think you'd interest initially, but let's work on this over time. And, you know, three years down the road, six years down the road, we have another bite of the apple and try to get more accomplished. I think that kind of long-term planning with respect to collective bargaining is really important.
Thank you. Can you please describe your experience with respect to advising school districts that matters involving the relatively new Title IX regulations and in other similar rights matters?
Yeah, I'm sure. I mean, Title IX right now is, um, consuming a lot of time for a lot of people. Um, you know, those regulations, we spent a lot of time working on them, developed our own in-house policy to walk clients through it. Um, for those that adopted, um, we're all waiting to find out what the new regulations are gonna be. They're supposed to be out in April, but they haven't come out yet. See whether or not that uses anything. Um, but certainly over the years, I've spent a lot of time helping clients with Title IX investigations, including under the current regs.
Thank you. What would your current school district clients say are your firm's primary strengths and challenges?
I hope responsiveness comes to the top of the list. Um, yeah, responsiveness and I hope practical solutions. You know, I think, um, when I work with clients, I get to know who they are. I get to know kind of their, their community's bent. Um, and so where I feel like I can really offer a lot of value is talking to you about, you know, what are the outcomes you wanna try to achieve? And let's find a path to get there. Um, and I think that's probably one of my strengths personally. One of my colleagues uses a great way to talk about this, because I think we're consistent in philosophy, which is we offer options. We don't tell anybody what to do. It's not our job. You know, that's what, um, the superintendent is for. That is what the school committee is for, depending on the issue. Um, or the building principle doesn't matter. What we are here to do is try to help you do what you wanna do and to give you different ways, think about that problem. To help you evaluate the risk of different courses in action. Um, so my hope is that that, that approach is consistent throughout the firm. Um, you know, I know it's one of those things where we, everybody should identify a weakness. Um, you know, if I would say, say ours as it relates to you folks, um, you know, I wish that we had the capacity to offer you special education services as well. Um, you know, I think right now I talk with my colleague who does that work and, um, you know, quite frankly, she's, she's at capacity. We're just not in a place to, um, take on another school district's work in that area. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna overpromise for you. You know, I don't wanna say, well, we'll, we'll take care of it and then have, um, my colleague, Kim, you know, not be able to handle it. Or we're in a position, we're hiring somebody and we don't have, you know, they don't have enough experience to really support you well. So, you know, that's, if there's a weakness in, in what we do, it's that, you know, quite frankly, we don't have the resources now to offer that, um, kind of to you.
Thank you. So Attorney Terry, those are all of our questions for you. Do you have any closing remarks for us?
I just really wanna thank you for the opportunity to talk with everybody. Um, you know, this is, um, it's what I, I'm passionate about doing. You know, I, I guess I call it my work, but it's really not. Um, you know, I think the, the thing I'd close on is, I think I've got a, a sort of a unique set of perspectives that really help my clients, or I hope they do. Um, I think some of you may know, I'm, I'm also on a school committee in my community. Um, I've served for seven years. Um, and so I really do have the ability to understand what it means to sit in the seat of a school committee member. But I'm also very clear that I don't serve as your additional, your, your tenth person on the school committee. Um, but it means I really do understand what it means to be in that spot. Um, and I'll just share one brief story to kind of close it out and that is, um, when we, when I first got on the school committee, we had, we collected bargaining, probably in the first couple of years. And I said, well, this is what I do. I'll, I'll do our collective bargaining. Um, so I sat down with our superintendent and the chair of our school committee and we went into the bargaining, uh, room with the team, um, from the association. And I sat down and four of my kids, teachers were sitting across from me. You know, and this is back, my daughter was probably third grade and my son was fifth, I think at the time. Actually, they were younger than that. And, um, so all of a sudden it kind of hit me, like, these are teachers that I like, you know? And these are people who, um, my daughter has a relationship with, my son has a relationship with, I have a relationship with. And, you know, the thing that I took away from that is really the, um, the different sense of, of human relation and connection that you have when you're actually negotiating with folks. And when you're an attorney and you come in from the outside and you're there to do a job and get a contract done. And what I really try to retain is, in terms of perspective, is never losing sight of the fact that these are all people that we're talking about. You know, it can be very easy to think from a bargaining perspective to say, you know, we don't care what you want. Um, this is what we have. This is what we're gonna offer and to lose sight of that. And I think, you know, being, it has a school committee member, having negotiated again with my kids' own teachers. Um, in a place where I want to maintain a positive relationship. That's, yeah, that's something that you, you have to go through and feel to be able to take that. And I try to, you know, keep that same approach. Um, you know, quite frankly, of respect across the table, um, with whoever I bargained, whether it's with my school committee hat on or negotiating for any one of my clients.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So, sorry. Yeah, are you, you want me to?
Sure.
I see. They're both in common.
Okay. Good evening, Attorney St. Florin. Thank you for being here. I'm Mary Gans. I'm the one that had communicated with you. Um, and so welcome. And can you, we do have fifteen minutes, so I will set a timer. I'll let you know if we're getting, uh, close to the end of the fifteen minutes. We have a few questions which I will be asking. And the first one is just, can you please introduce yourself and provide us with a brief summary regarding your experience of the field, in the field of education? Including what areas you each focus on?
Yes, absolutely. Mary, thank you so much for inviting us and, and thank you to the entire school committee, first of all, for having, uh, my partner, Andy Wa, and I here with you this evening. Um, so very briefly, I am, uh, one of the partners in our special education department here at Murphy Hess, Tumi and Lehane. Uh, there are five of us, uh, who work primarily, although not necessarily exclusively in the field of special education. I am one of those that really devotes my entire practice to special education law. So my practice involves, uh, representing school district clients in any matters having to do with special education, five oh four. Um, any disability related, uh, statute, section, uh, title two. Uh, we offer, uh, lots of trainings to our clients. We go to I E P T meetings. We do due process litigation. We, uh, are in court, uh, on B S E A appeal hearings. So we sort of run the gamut of everything, uh, special education in my department. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Andy to describe his practice. Andy, you're muted.
Thanks, Alicia, and good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Andy Wa and, uh, as Alicia said, I'm a partner at Murphy Hess. I've been there for the past twenty years. I'm the head of the firms. I've been there for the past 20 years. I'm the head of the firm's general education practice. So my practice is sort of complimentary to what Elisia just described. I do everything except for special education. So heavy emphasis on labor and employment issues, public records issues, procurement issues. A lot of my practice, which is probably 95% representing school committees, is counseling school committees on issues, trying to address issues before they become problems. We find that when we talk to clients upfront, we can save a lot of time, expense and headache for issues that come later on. So a lot of my practices involved in counseling of, of clients, but it runs the gamut of everything from collective bargaining to litigation in the form of grievances and arbitrations. I do a lot of practice at the Department of Labor Relations and other state agencies where we're representing school districts and school committees. And so that's, that's my practice.
In terms of how accessible, available and responsive your firm is to school, school district needs, phone calls and emails, can you please describe your firm's workflow process? That is, who would be our primary contact and for what types of matters? In what situations might the school district be working with other attorneys or associates in the firm? And what is your firm's availability for handling calls and emails on evenings and or weekends?
Sure, so I, I can start us off on that. So I would be the primary special education attorney and your contact person, and I would really handle most, if not all, of your special education needs. Occasionally, I will ask one of our associates to help if it's a matter of drafting a brief or something like that. But in terms of the actual representation before the B S E A, I would be that person for you. And I know that Andy would be that person for you in all non-special education matters. In terms of accessibility, you know, our clients have our cell phone numbers, email, text. We, we truly are available 24/7. I think especially with, with everything that has occurred since COVID and remote in Zoom. There's really, I, I do pride myself, of course, in making sure that my clients can reach me at all times. And so that's never been an issue at all.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just, just to add to that, one of the benefits that I think we bring as a firm is we have probably about 12 lawyers in the office who practice pretty much exclusively either in general education law or special education law. So we typically work as teams, and as we indicated in our cover letter, Elisia and Felicia Vassidaven would be the team of attorneys. They're both partners who would work on special education issues, on general education issues. I, along with Sarah Spatafor, would represent the committee in the district on general education matters. So we found that between email and cell phone accessibility and having a team in approach, it, it really helps to make sure that there's always someone available and that you can reach us very quickly because we understand that issues come up regularly that are urgent and need an immediate answer and can't wait. So we understand that.
Thank you. Elisia, this question may be for you. Please describe the difficult and complex special education due process hearing that you were involved in, including what made it so difficult and complex and its outcome?
Sure, well, you know, I was thinking about, because I heard that you had asked that question to the previous candidate. And so I was thinking a little bit about it. And, you know, I'll say, just generally speaking, what I'm finding in my practice, especially again due to COVID, there are, there is just a huge, been a huge spike in mental health issues with our students throughout the Commonwealth. And that has resulted unfortunately in lots of students really being unable to come to school in a traditional sense. And so I find that, although that's not a specific due process case, I've had several cases in due process that have dealt with that. For example, when a parent, as a result of that situation, asks for a residential placement from the district, which of course is the most restrictive setting that a district can send a student to. And what I find challenging, but also what has been quite rewarding, is thinking outside the box with clients and with parents and trying to work collaboratively to find a solution for these students, because in my opinion, at the end of the day, having these students go into a residential setting may not be ultimately what is in their best interest to really address what's been going on. And it really is, in my view, you know, an epidemic in terms of the mental health. So that, that has been and continues to be the most challenging kinds of due process hearings for me right now.
Thank you. Andy, this is probably for you. Please describe your experience with collective bargaining and what you do to prepare for collective bargaining negotiations.
Yeah, thank you. So I, a lot of my practice involves collective bargaining on behalf of school clients. And I think the first thing that, that we, that the client needs to decide is what my role will be. You know, my first and foremost task is to advise the client. I'm not the policymaker, I'm not the decision maker. That's, we understand who makes those decisions and we try and advise you and give you information so that you can make an informed decision. Having said that, what I would typically do is meet with the client, look at their collective bargaining agreement, and then talk to them about what the history of their relationship is with their various unions. One thing that I think is really important and that I've seen in, in 30 years of practice is that collective bargaining and labor relations is different than, say, litigation. This is not a situation where you can go in and burn bridges and say, I'm never going to see this person again and, and be an SOB. It just doesn't work. There's a relationship involved. And one of the things that I pride myself on is, while I've had very difficult negotiations over the years, is maintaining a level of respect for all the parties at the table and making sure everybody understands that that relationship, even though it can become frayed at times, is really important and it needs to be maintained. So I take my lead from the client. I've done everything from extremely positional bargaining to interest-based bargaining and everything in between. So, you know, my job is, I think, to give the best advice that I can give to the client so that they have options and understand what, what the, the spectrum of things are that they can do.
Thank you. Please describe your experience with respect to advising school districts and matters involving the relatively new Title IX regulations and other civil rights matters.
So I, I wish Felicia Vassidaven was here for that. She is our resident expert in all things Title IX. And with all of the recent changes in the statute, Felicia has done a lot of trainings for many of our school district clients. It is something that she can do with tremendous automaticity, so we always turn to her when anybody has a Title IX question or wishes to have a presentation on the updates and changes. And I'll just say one thing about that. I think one of the benefits of our firm, because we have quite a few attorneys in both our special ed and our general ed departments, is that we have presentations and PowerPoints pretty much all set to go. So there's not a whole lot of work involved. If somebody, whether it be the special ed director or anybody else, asks us to do a presentation on any topic, discipline, 504, special education, student records, we, we are pretty much ready to go with that. And so like I said, for Title IX, that, that's Felicia Vassidaven, who's one of our partners, who works actually both in special ed and general education.
Thank you. What would your current school district clients say are your firm's primary strengths and challenges?
Andy, do you want to go with that?
Sure, I can, I can take that. So I think in terms of strengths, I, I've been fortunate to represent a number of school districts for, for now going on 25, and in some case almost 30 years. And I think if you talk to any of them, and we obviously gave you references, they would say that there's a level of consistency that I keep my, my head and that I provide calm and balanced advice in a way that allows the client to make informed decisions. I think the, the biggest change over the last 25 years has been with the advent of, of new technologies, how instantaneous now both the ask is as well as the response. And so we've adjusted as that has happened. And as I touched on earlier, you'll have my cell phone number, people can call me if they need to reach me, and I will provide great responsiveness in terms of being able to get back to the client in terms of an issue that they may have. In terms of a weakness, I'm, I'm not usually good about speaking about weaknesses. I, I, I guess I'll defer to others to speak to that. I'm, I'm sure that I have some, but it's not something that I, I typically think about at length.
I'll say one thing on that. I mean, because we do represent a lot of, a lot of school districts throughout the Commonwealth, we have, you know, enough attorneys to be able to do that. Occasionally, there could be a conflict of interest that comes up between two districts that we represent. I do not consider that to be of, of great concern. It comes up very rarely. If it does, we have tremendous colleagues in the bar of special education. I can speak to special ed, and we're quickly able to find successor counsel for both of our clients in those cases, to be sure. But I have a case going on right now with two different districts that I represented. It's actually poking out very nicely. I'm representing both districts. There's no conflict of interest. It's actually happening, happening to me right now in two different cases. And so in some ways, the districts benefit because I sort of divide up my time between the two districts.
Thank you. So those are all, those are all of our questions. Do you have any closing remarks for us?
I mean, I'll just say, you know, this, this really is my, my life's work when it comes to special education. I always say I'm sort of a one trick pony. This is, this is what I do all day, every day. And the, the real benefit to me in the 20 plus years that I've been doing this work is that we have developed real relationships with our clients. We're so very lucky in that regard. So for me, it is just an utmost pleasure and honor to be working with special education directors, to be attending team meetings, to get to learn and know from teachers and speech language pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, B C B As. I mean, all of that, that is, for me, the joy in the work is to just have and build those relationships.
Yeah, I mean, I would just echo what Elisia said. I mean, I think the thing that makes this work very rewarding, obviously, the mission is, is important and in this day and age, more so than ever. That and, and having relationships with a wide variety of people who, who make the work interesting and keep us on our toes. So I, I really enjoy it. I've, I've done it for a long time. And as Elisia said, I think the relationships that we've developed along the way are, are critical and, and really integral to our ability to problem solve, because at the end of the day, what we're doing is, is we're coming up with options to solve problems. And I think we do that very well.
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight, especially on such short notice. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Have a great evening, everybody.
Good night.
They're here.
Good evening, Attorney Joyce. Thank you for being with us. I'm Mary Gans. I'm, I have been in touch with you. And as I said, we, in my emails, we do have 15 minutes this evening, so I have a list of questions for you, and we'll get started. So the first question is, welcome. Can you please briefly introduce yourself and provide us with a summary regarding your experience in the field of education law, including what areas you focus on?
Sure. Thank you so much, number one, for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. So in terms of my background, let's see, I am a former juvenile caseworker. My job was to work with at-risk youth initially when I got out of school in Baltimore. Then I turned to elementary school teaching. I taught third grade for three years in Compton, California, and then in East Palo Alto, California. I always say I didn't leave because it wasn't hard enough, but I wanted to challenge in a different direction. Or some would say my heart died and I went to law school, depending how you view it, understanding you're an attorney, Ms. Gans, no offense. But the, so I was able to go to B C where I was able to get my joint degree, my master's in education administration at the same time as my J D. I then clerked and I had the opportunity to work in the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office, was able to work in the gang unit prosecuting some of our most violent crimes in the city of Boston, but I wanted to get back into education. So I was able to get this job with a place that you probably have all heard of, known as the United States Department of Education. They have an office for civil rights that enforces laws regarding racial discrimination, gender-based discrimination, sexual harassment, as well as discrimination based on disability. So for about three years, it was my job, three and a half years, to investigate school districts for compliance with those civil rights laws and render decisions about whether or not those districts complied with the law. And if they had not, to enter into resolution agreements in order to bring just school districts into compliance. After doing that, I joined the firm of what is now Not All McAvoy and Joyce. I've been doing that for the past, I guess, 10 or 11 years. And our entire firm's practice is based on what I call school law. So that we do actually do not do labor, we do not do employment. Me and the other five attorneys in our office focus exclusively on all student-related issues. So a huge part of what we do obviously would be special education representation. But we also cover the gamut from residency, McKinney-Vento, civil rights, you name it, essentially the way I describe it, the superintendent, principal, assistant principal, special ed director, has a fire that arises relative to a student. Right? We're there to take the call and help you all navigate that, that situation. So we're, if you will, a specialty within a specialty is the way I would describe it. I will say this, that I, when you talk about education background, this is something I really sought out from, for a long period of time. I really feel privileged to do this work and to develop the relationships with schools, school committees, superintendents and administration. It's been a, a really rewarding experience and something that I enjoy.
Great, thank you. In terms of how accessible, available and responsive your firm is to school district needs, phone calls and emails, can you please describe your firm's workflow process? That is, who would be our primary contact and for what types of matters? In what situations might the school district be working with other attorneys or associates in the firm? And what is your firm's availability for handling calls and emails on evenings and or weekends?
Sure. So you're looking at your primary contact, right? And the, the client always determines who their contact is in our firm. So public schools wanted to work with Michael Joyce, and they work with Michael Joyce. In terms of my personal responsiveness, I think you'd be hard pressed to find, find more responsiveness. Like others, you know, cell phone, email, text, you name it. We're accessible. And if I happen not to be accessible, we do have five other attorneys that do what I do, and you certainly have full access to them. In terms of working with other attorneys, again, it is the client that dictates with whom they work. There would be times, let's say, in the spring of the year, in the height of I E P meeting season, where it might be, I might not be available and the timelines that are required under law. So it may be another attorney pinching in. There certainly would be some times where I'd be collaborating with attorneys in my firm in terms of development of legal research memos, things of that nature. But all other aspects would be me.
Thank you. Can you please describe a difficult and complex special education due process hearing that you were involved in, including what made it so difficult and complex and its outcome?
So, you know, I, I would say that I don't, I think that I don't find special ed law extraordinarily complex. I do think piecing together the story in a hearing can be a complex part of it. The one that I had most recently that was difficult and challenging, because it was, it was a hard situation in which we did have a student in a residential placement, and the student was hospitalized due to on some unsafe behaviors. And he was ready to be discharged. In the school that we were paying, well over $100,000 for, refused to take the kid back. They didn't follow any of the rules. They just said, no, we're not taking. And so we were forced in collaboration with, we tried to work with the school to take the kid back. We had a student who was stuck in a hospital. Literally, they wouldn't discharge him. He had no school to go to. We had applied to other places. There were no openings. We were waiting openings, right? And we had to take the actual private school to hearing and compel them to take the student back, working collaboratively with the family to do that. I bring that up because you used the word difficult, Ms. Gans. And it was difficult because we were working with, it was actually an older parent, a very difficult kid, very concerned for her child in real safety circumstances, both, both emotionally as well as physically, being in the hospital, a setting that was not an educational setting. So in that aspect, it was difficult. I would say, outside to answer kind of the question you aren't asking about, some of the more difficult cases I would say nowadays are coming in the aspects of civil rights. And I say they're challenging in that because I do think such cases have a threat of fracturing communities, right? And, or bringing them together, depending on how we respond to those. So that's a big part of my practice that I think is, is extremely challenging at this time.
Thank you. I believe you said you don't do labor and employment law, so you can pass this question. But the question is, please describe your experience with collective bargaining and what you do to prepare for collective bargaining negotiations.
Sure. The way I prepare for collective bargain is I say, I don't do that work. You should call your labor and employment.
Thank you. Please describe your experience with respect to advising school districts and matters involving the relatively new Title IX regulations and in other civil rights matters.
Sure, as I said, as part of my background, I, my full-time job for three and a half years was enforcing civil rights statutes, including Title IX. So when the Title IX changes came out and were actually declared, and the final regulations passed in May of 2020, that was in the middle of pandemic. and the final regulations passed in May of two thousand twenty, that was in the middle of pandemic. So what we did is we prepared and immediately began, starting at the end of June, doing full presentations that would be allow our clients to be fully compliant with Title IX come August twentieth, so August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, when the law passed. It went into effect August two thousand twenty. By September two thousand twenty, we had developed a full eighty-page Title IX manual that would allow our clients to comply with these extremely complicated regulations. The new Title IX regulations are very unique in that they are, they require schools to to respond to sexual harassment in a way that the K through twelve schools have never been required to respond. And so inconsistent and at times counterintuitive to our current practice, there was an immediate need for both professional development as well as resources to help support individuals. So I would say that that started just right immediately in the fall and we have been with our clients every step of the way throughout. I would say because of the changes in Title IX, that has definitely been a growth part of the practice. And I think you're seeing it certainly on the um on the ground in terms of the number of claims that are arising and the challenges in processing them. So I would say that that would be a particular strength, not only of our firm, but myself personally.
Thank you. What would your current school district client say are your firm's primary strengths and challenges?
Yeah, I I think that um my clients would say that our strengths are our responsiveness, our knowledge of the law and our ability to build relationships. I think that the way I view my relationship with clients is I am general counsel. So let's say in this case, it might be the, if I were so fortunate, the Fall River, so the Falmouth Public Schools, right? All I I what I do is give advice and try to help you assess your risk and try to help you with your options and develop those options so you all can make the best decisions for your school district. I love that relationship. I love working with smart people. I love helping them navigate difficulty and challenging situations. I like being the one that can help school districts see the bigger picture sometimes because it's not, it's just not about the law to me. It's about what is the right decision for the Falmouth Public Schools. So I think that's a particular strength of of ours. The in terms of a weakness, I think that's probably an easy one for me because I get asked a lot, Mike, I know you don't do employment. Would you answer this question? I know you don't do labor. What do you think of this? I think that some of my clients would love it if we ventured out that, but we feel very much committed that we can serve our clients best by really having this specialization.
Thank you. Those are all of our questions. Do you have any closing remarks for us?
Just I think I I've been able to hopefully been able to convey to you all how passionate that I am about this work and how lucky I feel to be able to do it. This is something that I thought about a lot when I was teaching third grade for three years. What do I want to do? And it's what drove me to go to law school and get my master's in education simultaneously. In fact, if, you know, I taught at Boston College School of Law and B C, the Linn School of Education for five years as an adjunct and at law policy as well. So I just want to evoke and the passion I have for this work, the passion I have for working with clients, how much I value the relationships that I've been able to develop throughout Commonwealth of Massachusetts and what an honor it would be to work with Falmouth Public Schools.
Thank you so much, Attorney Joyce. And thank you for taking the time to join us tonight.
Thank you so much for having me.
Hi. I do have Caitlin Leach with me. Good evening. That's possible for her to be promoted to a panelist as well. Thank you.
Caitlin, you said Caitlin?
Leach Mulroney, yes, thank you.
Thank you both for joining us. I'm Mary Gans. I'm along to communicate with you, Paige, and I mentioned, we do have fifteen minutes. I'm going through a series of questions and the first question is welcome. Can you please introduce yourselves and provide us with a brief summary regarding your experience in the field of educational law, including what areas you focus on?
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much to the school committee for having us. I am Paige Tobin and I'm a partner at the firm, Murphy, Lamery and Murphy, and I have with me Caitlin Leach Mulroney, who is also a partner at the firm. We our firm consists of eight attorneys and four who practice in the area of student services for which we are here this evening. We do also have a labor and employment part of our firm, but that firm is that department is that capacity. So we are here as part of the Student Services Department to really talk about our work in the area of services, which involves both special education law, discipline, civil rights, Title IX, five oh four, students who are L students who and also D E I work in school districts. We have a very strong belief that our job is to counsel school districts and not only provide advice on day-to-day issues, but sort of to help them with policy as well. And in that regard, we serve as the advisor to the Massachusetts Administrators of Special Education in which we work on policy and advocate for school districts in both the state and federal level. Some examples of that are we were involved in the I E P Improvement Project with the state and we have consulted with guidance for the state that the state is releasing in terms of timeout and restraints. And we also have done policy work with O C A P to advocate for school districts in Massachusetts.
Thank you. In terms of how accessible, oh, in terms of how accessible, available and responsive your firm is to school district needs, phone calls and emails, can you please describe your firm's workflow process? That is, who would be our primary contact? And for what types of matters? In what situations might the school district be working with other attorneys or associates in the firm? And what is your firm's availability for handing calls, handling calls and emails on evenings and or weekends?
Sure, I'll just answer briefly and then I'm going to have Caitlin step in. So our firm, it really does have a very strong team approach. We we speak to each other all day long about everything and we really do believe that it's important not to just have one person who works with a a school district, but to kind of have a team approach. So for this fourth Falmouth, it would be Caitlin and myself, and then we would be supported by our associate attorneys. And I'll let Caitlin speak to you about the responsiveness.
I can speak to that. I would say, like everybody else, we are extremely responsive. We are in constant text, email, telephone conversation with our clients and readily available nights, very early mornings, sometimes weekends, whatever people need, we're more than happy to make ourselves available. I also think that, you know, over time, we also have developed very close relationships with our clients and it's something that we're happy to do. And I think being able to provide that level of responsiveness is something that I take pride in and and actually very enjoyable part of my work. I like being able to be available to my clients as needed and and provide solutions for problems.
Thank you. Can you please describe a difficult and complex special education due process hearing that you were involved in, including what made it so difficult and complex and its outcome?
Sure, um, I think the two that I've had that have been extremely difficult have been cases, kind of the opposite case. One is where there was a student who was eight years old. So he was a very young student. He was very very intelligent, but he had significant mental health needs, been hospitalized several times. His his needs were such, his behaviors were such that his parent had to keep a lockbox in the kitchen to have all of their knives and other sharp objects in it because of the level of his behaviors. It was a case in which the parent was a single parent. She was extremely devoted to her child, but she was just exhausted and she was seeking a residential placement for her child. It was a a case that we worked with her and as well as other state agencies and it did end going to hearing, but we were able to work with other state agencies to help her provide support that allowed her son to remain in his home in a day placement with a lot of support from youth villages and other agencies. And so that was, that was a great case for me because it was again, a case that she was seeking a residential placement and four years later, I I ran into her actually when I was going into the school for another, you know, a team meeting for a different student. And she said, you know, I, you know, I ended up losing that case and I was very upset at the time, but it was the best thing that ever happened for me and my son because of the state agency involvement. So it's the idea of being able to make decisions that are really good for students while still empathizing with parents, but also really having the student as the focus of the decision. And another case that I had that was difficult was one in which the parent was really refusing special education services that the child really desperately needed. And that was a case again that involved other state agencies.
Thank you. I believe you said, occurring Tobin, that your firm's labor practice is at capacity. So feel free to pass on this question, but please describe your experience with collective bargaining and what you do to prepare for collective bargaining negotiations.
Again, that's an area that I would pass on to my partner. And it's, you know, again, not an area that we handle in the Student Services Department.
Thank you. Can you please describe your experience with respect to advising school districts and matters involving the relatively new Title IX regulations and in other similar rights matters?
Sure, I can. Um, the new Title IX regulations, I think, as the other attorneys have said, have been extremely complex. What we've done in our firm is received specialized training from ATICS, which is a national organization that certifies attorneys and investigators in Title IX. So we have done that training. So while we have our own breadth of knowledge, you know, being attorneys and working in this field for over, for me, almost thirty years and for Caitlin, I think, close to eighteen. We, you know, it is good to sort of see what everyone else is doing and to have that that the national view. So we did that training. What we've been doing in order to help our clients is real is developing checklists and systems again, so that they will know it's such a process-oriented regulation now that it's it's extremely important for the client to know exactly what to do. And I found that some of the materials are so dense that in the heat of the moment, when, you know, something is happening and a principal has, you know, a thousand other things going on and there's a Title IX issue, to be able to pick up kind of like the bigger manual that talks about everything under the sun, but these quick checklists of what do we do at this moment? And is very helpful. And so that's what we've done.
Just to piggyback on that, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We've created those systems for all of sort of the major areas for our clients, student discipline, bullying, Title IX, and also general civil rights. So we have over the years sort of cultivated these form letters and notices and they are accompanied by checklists and then also accompanied by trainings. And I find, you know, it really helps busy administrators to sort of narrow down what they need to complete. And it also really helps to ensure compliance. And I think over the years has led to many favorable outcomes, P R S complaints and O C R complaints. Because I think a lot of people do a very well-intentioned response, but the documentation is lacking. So while they may have sort of done everything right along the way, they weren't documenting it appropriately and it's really helped them.
Thank you. What would your current school district client say are your firm's primary strengths and challenges?
I think that our school district clients would say that our responsiveness and our our understanding the culture of the school district. You know, I think it's one thing to know the law and it's an entirely different thing to understand the culture of a school district and what is important to the school district and what is the vision of the school district and to be responsive to that. Because again, there's always a, you know, kind of the black and white answer to the law, but how it impacts a community is extremely important and communities have different visions and cultures. So it's it's, you know, that that's what I would think would be our strength and school districts would say that about us. I think the weakness that they would say is is a weakness, I think that most of our colleagues share, and it's the lack of diversity in in law firms. And it's something that we've been really thinking about seriously over the past few years and really trying to recruit and develop a more diverse law firm. And it's something that is still a work in progress.
Thank you. So those are all of our questions. Do you both have any closing remarks for us?
We very much appreciate the time and we're available to answer other questions. And I don't, I guess, you know, I I know the other attorneys who have spoken said it too, but we also, you know, we love what we do. We we work very hard and we we love special ed, we love student services, we find everything that we do so interesting that we talk to each other constantly about it. And we're always very excited to work with a new school district. So thank you for the opportunity.
We love our clients. Thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, again, thanks to all the attorneys for joining us this evening. I know school committee has a lot of information to digest. And so if there are any, you know, questions or comments that you'd like to make now, please feel free. At our next meeting, we'll go into a deliberation of depth, but if there's anything, yes, Terrence.
I have a question before I do my deeper research. So is it possible to have two different firms?
Yes, yes, and exactly. So there is definite value in moving to a model where we have two law firms, one specializes in general ed and one that specializes in special ed. There's a definite benefit to that. So thank you for that question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so again, we will circle back to us at the next meeting. Gives you time to redo the materials really. So good for now. And next on the agenda is the update by the superintendent. Thank you. And thank you to Anna Venn. I will not have to share as much because she had many of the things on on my my list tonight. I do want to add one thing about the after prom experience. It really is magical. I was so excited to to join them for a while and the students really enjoyed the activities and it's so nice to have a a safe place for students to go after the after prom. The amount of work and the amount of people spending days setting the rec center up for the event. And the amount of work that's put into it is actually, you know, really incredible. So I just want to give a shout out for all of those that make that event possible for our students. Just also, I'll give one COVID update. I know we don't talk about that very often. But the testing program was first in in April. They extended it through May and now they've just recently extended the testing program through the rest of the school year. And you can sign up still at any time if you'd like to join the program. But that's where we are and I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you. Next, routine business, approve the minutes of April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. And a second? Bill Ryder, second, thank you. Any edits? Seeing none, it will be a roll call vote. Start with those of us in Zoom. Andrea?
Andrea, yes.
Kelly?
Well, yes.
Yeah.
I'm I'm gonna abstain, though I know I don't need to, but just I wasn't there, so I'm gonna abstain. Thank you.
Bill Ryder?
Yes.
Terry Medeas, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes. Natalie Canolopoulos, also a yes. Committee member reports. And Terry?
This is regarding the subcommittee of communication. Remember that one of the things we said was to get into school for positive events? Yay, they have brought back the senior projects. I love those. So I've signed up the two of them. I'm gonna do I'm going to do, um, climate change and, uh, cultural immersion. So, um, uh, and I hope some other people, they sent out the email to everybody. It's the first, it's only an hour in the morning. Now, I hope there are going to be other teachers to do it. I'm not sure, um, how big it's gonna be, but when you go in there, it's like the kids that were shown the science reports there. It's amazing what they know and what they can pull together and everything. So I encourage you to go. There's a whole bunch left. Okay, it's next week because now I know where these are. So, um, I feel com, I'm, I'm happy that we're keeping up with our committee, um, goals was to get into the school and this time it's a positive thing. So I'm encouraging other people to sign up.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other committee member reports? Andrea?
I'll go ahead and sort of piggyback on, uh, Terry's comment about, um, getting, uh, into the schools and communicating with our community. And that is, um, to remind everyone about the, um, VIPS, uh, volunteer recognition dinner that will be, um, able to be held in person this year. And, um, it's a great way to, um, for the school committee to interact with all of those people who spend so much time and give so generously of their time, um, to our district. And, uh, tickets are on sale. Make sure you book yours as soon as you can, if you haven't already.
Great, thank you, Andrea. Uh, Leah?
I'm, I'm sorry if my internet's not very stable, but I, I just wanna, um, second what, uh, Lori said. My daughter got to enjoy prom and after prom this weekend or last weekend. And I just want to say as, as a mother, having my, no, my daughter was in a safe place where all of these people have invested so much time to provide the best night for her possible. It was wonderful. So I just want to thank the community for all of the work around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
I do. Um, I just want to say that I'm not really, um, going into the school, but I've been asked to chaperone the, um, art, trip to the high school art trip to New York City this Friday. So, um, I'll be happy to report back. As a college student, I did that trip as a one-day-one-credit art class. So I'm really looking forward to, um, seeing it through the students' eyes, seeing, um, what they, how they kind of interact with the museum. And, um, I'm really looking forward to it.
That's awesome. Thank you. Kelly, I sign your hand out.
Hi, and so, uh, negotiations is ongoing. Um, we met, I guess it's almost two weeks ago now. Um, um, so, but related to negotiations and not quite, um, on the exact topic. There were just, there was an article in the paper last Friday that, um, touched on our negotiations process and some of the things weren't entirely accurate. Um, and we've heard already from F E A leadership that they were going to reach out to the paper to make some corrections on the content. And, you know, since the paper's not until Friday, so instead of waiting, um, I just wanted to mention them briefly now, if that's okay. That, and you know, I said, I'm just, I just kept going. I didn't even wait for you to tell me. I hope it's okay. One of the things, um, that it mentioned in the article was that school staff contracts were written for one year during COVID and that the current teacher's contract, um, provides a one percent increase year by year. And I just wanted to clarify that because that, I don't want anyone to be under the impression that, that we write one-year contracts. We have three-year contracts with F E A, um, and the current contract will end this June. And we won't know the increases for the years to come until we come to an agreement together with F E A through our contract negotiations. So just wanted to clarify that. We did have, um, one-year additions to the contract during COVID to coordinate all of the moving pieces and compensate for all the COVID issues that we had. But, um, we're not, we're not dealing with one-year contracts, um, thankfully here in Falmouth. Um, it did also say that there were years that the staff didn't get any increases. And, you know, you have to go back a really, really, really long way to find a year, um, where that happened. And that was really under extraordinary circumstances. I don't want the, the Falmouth community to think that we're, we're giving, um, zero percent increases to our staff because we, we definitely want, don't want that. And then the last thing that it said is that Dr. Dor got a four percent bonus because of her excellent work during COVID. And, um, although her work was excellent during COVID, we are not in the business of giving out bonuses. So that is, uh, the last inaccuracy. I just wanted to mention them in case it doesn't make it into the paper. I know F E A intended to get this information out there too. So, um, and then I have one other thing, which is that, um, a week from today, please make sure that you have in your schedule a time, um, to vote, um, not just the school committee, but anyone that is paying attention, watching tonight and managed to make it to the end of the movie, or the end of the movie, the end of the meeting. It's because I'm watching on TV. It's so confusing. Um, you know, this is one of our little, um, projects is to make sure that our seniors are registered, that people know to vote, uh, and so mark your calendar.
Awesome. Thank you, Kelly, for that information. Um, and then one update from me, just a reminder that the substantive evaluations are due on Friday. Um, and then, you know, all of us in the room and all of us on Zoom, uh, if you could email those to me. Um, and Leah sent out the observations that we can use as evidence last week, I think. And we also have the notes from listening sessions and school meeting meetings. So there's a lot of evidence to help guide that evaluation. Um, any other committee member reports?
May I make a statement?
Yes, please make a statement.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody. School committee members, superintendents, because they did work for two, enjoyed that in both capacities. Everybody in administration with the support, the help. Learning process for me coming from a new state, from a different state to, um, a new environment. So the learning process is very good. I like to thank Mr. Murphy for the budget because I really enjoyed being on that committee. I lo, I love the relationship with town and the school committee and the school district. I think that's great. Please vote. I think it's great because the last time I ran, I was unclosed. And I'm glad to see that there is interest in school committee, that there are several people running for the three positions. I absolutely love that. I think that's the way it should be every time. And as in most cases, I will leave you with a quote. However, I'm gonna leave you with three quotes. I think part of your job is perseverance. And perseverance is the hard work you do after you get tired of doing the hard work you already did. And you need to keep that in mind because it's so much of the things that you do and accomplish is perseverance. Especially on the school committee, especially dealing with the community, dealing with negotiations, everything you deal with, you have to have patience. And perseverance is pretty good. I'm also very cognizant of meetings. Sometimes we overmeet. And meetings are real important, but you need to take advantage of doing the best you can in those meetings. Because if Columbus had an advisory committee, he would probably be still at the dock. And my last one is about commitment because anytime we do something, there has to be a commitment to doing it well. I think I, I, I know I've done this one before, but I just think it's a good one. There is a difference between involvement and total commitment. When you're eating ham and eggs, the chicken that laid the egg had an involvement. But the pig that provided the ham had total commitment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And we will miss your quotes. Any other committee member, um, reports or requests for information? Will this be my, is your request for information? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? And Mr. Ryder, would you like to?
Motion to adjourn.
And since there's seconds, Melissa seconds. Okay, roll call vote. Andrea?
Andrea Thurl, yes.
Yeah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Welch, yes.
Bill Ryder, yes.
Erin Medeas, yes. Melissa Keith, yes. Natalie Canoplas, also, yes. To your turn. Have a wonderful night, everyone.